Good afternoon. Welcome to the afternoon session of the Board of County Commissioners. Welcome to Harris Hall. We have a couple of things on the agenda today. The first thing is the reading of, the fifth reading and final deliberation on Order 1343 in the matter of amending the Lane County Rural Comprehensive Plan, RCP, to add a quarry site. I’m going to read the ordinance title. Ordinance Number PA 1343, Fifth Reading for Board, Final Review and Deliberations in the Matter of Amending the Lane County Rural Comprehensive Plan, RCP, to Add a Quarry Site to the Inventory of Significant Mineral and Aggregate Sites. Authorized Mining and Processing as Provided by the Oregon Administrative Rules, OAR 660-023-180. Amending the RCP to Redesignate Land from Forest (F) to Natural Resource. Mineral (N-R-M) and Rezone That Land from Non-Impacted Forestland (F1 Zone) and Impacted Forestland (F2 Zone) to Quarry and Mine Operations (QM) Zone. Require Site Review and Proposed Mining Operations Pursuant to Lane Code 16.2574AJ and Adoption Savings and Severability Clauses. Today’s meeting is to deliberate the Hazledale Quarry application. The Board of County Commissioners is the local approval authority for these proceedings. This is a quasi-judicial procedure, and the Board’s decision is appealable to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Materials related to this proceeding are available on the Board’s Agenda webpages and included in the supplemental staff report, “Revised Findings and Conditions.” The Board conducted a hearing on this item on October 12, 2016, and closed the hearing at that time. The record was kept open for the submission of additional testimony and closed on November 29, 2016. Tentative deliberations occurred on December 13, 2016. The Board discussed the evidence and testimony in the record and tentatively approved recommenda- strike that, and tentatively recommended approval of the application on a four-to-one vote. The purpose of this proceeding is the Board’s final deliberation on the matter. Because the hearing and record are closed to the public, no public comment or written testimony from any party or person can be placed in front of the Board members at this time. At this time, Board, I will call for disclosure of any ex parte contacts or for abstentions due to conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or biases to the Board. Commissioner Stewart?
None.
Commissioner Laiken?
None.
Commissioner Sorenson?
None.
Commissioner Bozovic?
None.
I received a telephone call yesterday at my desk. My phone rang, I answered it, from Hillary Van Der Veer. Ms. Van Der Veer asked me a couple of questions, asked me how I was going to vote today, and I said that she would, that it would be made public record today. So that is the extent of the conversation. I believe that Ms. Van Der Veer has submitted written testimony subsequent to that. I will also state that Ms. Van Der Veer made a post on my personal Facebook page, which I deleted without reading. So anything further on that, Mr. Clark?
No, I guess just to reiterate that if there’s any contacts beyond the close of the record, which was November 29th, is that right? That would constitute an ex parte contact, but as long as the Board doesn’t, hasn’t had any of those, I’m pleasantly surprised.
And we are, okay, and we have declared no ex parte. Commissioner Bozovic?
Then I’ll revise that Ms. Van Der Veer also posted on my Facebook page, and my response was that the record was closed. And there’s been several attempts to send testimony to us by email since then. I have not read any of the letters. I’ve just put them into the, my archive file on Hazledale.
Thank you. Commissioner Stewart?
Mr. Chair, I would revise mine to reflect that I have received, I believe, four emails this past week in regards to this matter. Did not read the substantive. I did forward one to land management, and that’s been the extent of my new information.
Thank you. Commissioner Sorenson?
I had a number of emails, and most recently, I had a couple today, but I didn’t read them because I knew it was going to happen today, but I’ve had other emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Laiken?
Haven’t had any telephone calls.
Same, emails.
I’ll stay the same, other than the telephone call, which I picked up yesterday. I have received emails that I believe all County Commissioners received the same emails. Thank you. We’ll move forward, and before the staff presentation, I’m going to say just a couple of words, if I may. You know, we’re a public deliberation body, and we are, we conduct the public business in a very serious environment. I served 10 years on the Eugene City Council. During that 10 years, we experienced a great deal of dissent and comment from the audience. At that point in time, I will state that I found it quite often the case that people holding signs intimidate other people in the rules, in the room, who don’t agree with their signs. They’re intended, I’m certain, for the Board and maybe for the TV screens to see. But the signs, since we don’t have any signs in here that say, “Don’t hold signs,” you can do what you want, but it’s not very courteous to the other people in the room that are holding your signs. You wouldn’t feel it good if they were holding signs in your face. So really, the signs are not really welcome here. We don’t have any rules specifically against it, so wave your signs if you want, but just bear in mind, I spent those 10 years on the Eugene City Council, and sometimes some of the people in the room were very unnerved by the people holding signs. If that’s your intent, please continue. If you would like to comply with my request, please hold your signs down. Thank you. At this point, we’ll hear the staff report.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board of Commissioners. For the record, I am Staff Planner Deanna Wright, who has processed this application. We last met in February with a request to roll to today’s date. The previous deliberations occurred on December 13, 2016, where the Board discussed the evidence against the approval criteria. At the conclusion of those deliberations, the Board tentatively approved the application in a four-to-one vote and directed staff to return with revised set of findings, condition, and revised ordinance. Staff has completed this action, which was included in your packet as separate attachments. During last deliberations, the Board did ask to change or include some conditions which were laid out on Pages 5 and 6 of the staff report. To summarize, two conditions were added. One, avoidance of the landfill, which is condition of approval 48, and watering of off-site roads, which is condition of approval number 49. And two existing conditions were revised. One, more details regarding the date dealing with the noise monitoring plan, which is condition of approval number 25, and a request to go from Tier 2 to Tier 3 off-road engine standards, which is condition of approval number 34. Materials related to the Board’s proceedings were posted on the Board’s Agenda webpage. Again, the hearing was, the hearing was closed on October 12, 2016, but the record was kept open and closed on November 29, 2016, in order for additional testimony to be submitted. As such, any material received after the close of the record cannot be considered. At this time, based off substantial evidence in the record and the revised findings and conditions, the Planning Director believes that the application meets approval criteria. If approved, the ordinance will take effect in 30 days. The Board’s decision is appealable to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. So should the Board have any questions at this time? We are available to answer them. Otherwise, this does conclude my staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Anything else from other members of the staff? At this point, I’ll turn the, turn it open to the Board for questions. Questions from the Board or comments? Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last couple of weeks, I would share that, I think it was about two now, three weeks ago, I attended a diversity training event that had Mr. Yonker, Dr. Yonker, from the University of Oregon, Confederated Tribe from the Umquah-Sayusla, excuse me. Commissioner Bozovic?
Umquah-Sayusla Indians.
Thank you. And he, and he was explaining how relationships should be considered between Native Americans and government. And one of the things that was alerted to me at that time was that federally recognized tribes, which there are nine of them, I believe, in, in Oregon, which includes the Confederated Tribes of the Warm Springs Reservation, essentially are recognized as formal governments somewhere, actually not similar, but with, of equal stature as the state of Oregon. So that’s federal law that recognizes them. Then under state law, state law, there is an ORS that requires consultation, but it only applies to state agencies. I can refer to that if needed. Anyway, in short, I tried to find, in working with legal counsel, and you’re welcome to pipe in at any time, a legal requirement for Lane County government to consult when requested. We did have a letter in the record, which was unsigned by an individual that claimed that the Confederated Tribe wished to consult on this matter. And then I reviewed, and that was a May 23 letter, and then on a November 3 letter that was produced, which is signed by Robert Burnone, the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer, went into great length about the, I guess, the status of the tribe, their treaty rights, the management of the lands, and the various different federal laws, middle tribes of Oregon in 1855, then talked about the fact that Charlie Tufti and the neighboring Jim Chuck Chuck Homestead properties are significant to the Native American and Oregon history. And then went on to say that specific concern are possible Indian burial, Indian burials potentially located in the vicinity of the old Charlie Tufti Homestead. And so making that clear, then went on to say that at least seven of the, it’s been documented by Charlie Tufti’s foster brother, that the, at least seven of the Indian burials are located on the Charlie Tufti Homestead property, which is, my understanding, within the buffer zone, the 1,500 percent, 1,500 buffer, buffer zone?
Charlie Tufti’s land claim was not in, within the 1,500-foot buffer.
Okay.
Jim Chuck Chuck was.
Okay. But the point is, is that they have low, they have significantly, they’ve stated in the letter that they are present on the Homestead property, so that we know a general location of it, which is, you’re saying, outside the 1,500-foot buffer, but also not within, even if it was within the 1,500-foot buffer, there’s no actual activity to take place within the 1,500-foot buffer to disturb the, those lands. So I believe that there’s record, there’s information in the record that, that clearly shows that their concerns have been addressed in the record. They also, they are also afforded, this does not, by approving this, this does not grant them to just immediately go out and work. They’re going to have to get operating permits from Dogami, which is a, a state or agency which, under law, they are mandated to come, to consult if requested by Warm Springs Tribe, so those issues could even be further addressed. So I want to take the time to thank staff for helping me go through this process, to understand what our, we believe our legal rights are in regards to this, and to show that their concerns have been met, as addressed within the letter. I even went so far to think about, could we possibly engage in a, in a consultation, but there was no legal requirements that I could find in law to do that? And it’s also my understanding that this application is beyond the 180-day timeframe. Is that correct? It’s allotted for approval?
It was submitted in December 2015.
So if the application, and right now, we’re past it, but we do have-
We had a timeline waiver to January 3, 2017.
So we have a waiver from the applicant. If the, this drags out further, what could potentially be a ramification by the applicant in this process? A writ of review in a court or-
If a decision is, well, Andy will tell the details, but if the decision, local decision isn’t made within the state mandated timeline, then the applicant does have some legal rights.
Yeah, and it would, it would be a-
Writ of mandamus.
Yeah. I was trying to think of writ of what, but yeah. A writ to the, to the Circuit Court. The difference there is the burden shifts a little bit. It ends up being that the government is required to prove why that permit shouldn’t issue, and there’s also a attorney fee provision as part of that. So there is some risk with not getting a decision out within the appropriate timelines.
I’ve never been personally part of a writ, but I’ve seen the ramifications of a writ down in Cottage Grove with a land use application down there. The applicant went through that process, and the court approved their application as written, so all the cities worked through the Planning Commission, and to come up with conditions of approval were not applicable. So there’s a potential if, if this went, the writ of review process, the conditions that we’ve had before us could potentially not apply. Is that correct?
Yeah, it’s, writs are a little messy because you end up putting a Circuit Court judge in the role of deciding land use cases, which they don’t get involved in very often because these writs don’t come up much, and that’s the only instance where the judge will be considering those things. So it’s, it’s sort of uncharted territory for most of them, and they don’t welcome it. But yeah, the decision that comes out of that is what the judge will craft, which may or may not include the sort of conditions that the county has recommended.
Well, thank you for allowing me to kind of share the process that I’ve been through the last two or three weeks, and trying to understand if there is significance that’s existed that hasn’t been addressed. I believe the record reflects that it has. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart. Further questions? Commissioner Sorenson?
On this matter of the tribal consultation, Mr., Mr. Counsel, Mr. Clark, because your name is written there, first name county, last name council. Mr. Clark, there’s been some mention of the requirement for a state agency to consult with a tribe. My question is, is there any prohibition against the county when it’s undertaking land use planning to, to voluntarily consult with the tribe?
It’s-
Are we prohibited from, as opposed to-
There’s no strict prohibition, but I’ll remind the Board and other folks listening that it’s a quasi-judicial land use application process we’re in now, and so what the nature of any consultation gets ambiguous to me. If this were a legislative matter and the Board were in charge of deciding policy issues, there’d be a lot of room for consultation directly between this Board and tribal representatives, for example. In a quasi-judicial case, as I said, it’s not clear what you do with that sort of consultation. It could happen at a, at a staff level, but then again, the staff isn’t allowed to add criteria to what’s in the code, because the applicant has rights, it’s entitled to the code that was there when it filed its application. We don’t get to come along later and add in additional requirements outside of the sort of conditions that are allowed.
At any rate, the record, as it stands now, shows no consultation.
Correct.
Yep. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorenson. Further questions? Commissioner Stewart?
It’s just a comment. I would add that at the recommendation of staff, I did reach out and leave a message for the Tribal Chief, Mr. Green, to inquire about the request for consultation and see if Lane County had met their expectations. I left that message about two and a half weeks ago, and there’s been no response whatsoever.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Then, actually, I’m just going to, I question myself, I’m, a question that I have myself. I’m, I’m concerned, you know, we have, we have a heritage here in Oregon that permeates from one border to the other, and that is the people who were here first. The lands that they lived on, the lands that they own and owned, the places they lived, the places they conducted their ceremonies, the places they interred their, their loved ones who passed. And I’m, I’m highly concerned about that. So I want to know, we’ve gone through the process, we’re at the point right now where we’re, we’re going to make a motion and recommend passage of this ordinance, or ask for passage of this ordinance. But let’s go a few years down the road, and let’s say there’s a operation going on out there, and maybe somebody mistakenly said that there were no burial sites here, maybe somebody mistakenly said that there were no villages here, and we do find, or somebody does find evidence, whatever it may be, that, that there had been previous activity there, that, that something needs to be reconsidered. My question is, what happens there? Now, I’m going to cite an example. I’m from Bethel, formerly on the Bethel School Board before I was on the Eugene City Council, and we built schools in Bethel. Recently, we built Fairfield Elementary School, among others. And as we were building Fairfield Elementary School, now Bethel is mainly in the wetlands, former river channels permeated through there, excellent camas fields out there, and it’s a part, a part of the Willamette Valley that was used heavily at certain times of the year by the people who were living here at the time, before, before European settlers came in. Consequently, I, you know, the, the people were everywhere. You can’t say, “Well, they were only here, they were only there.” They were, they were everywhere. And then they encountered some native artifacts. It was, it was tools, I believe, and some apparel, maybe a part of a shoe. And what happened then, when Fairfield Elementary School was being built just a couple of years ago, and this is highly documented, construction stopped, excavation stopped completely, and they went through a process of kind of manually excavating what was the area surrounding. And just as an adjunct to that, what they found were some artifacts, some beautiful, beautiful artifacts that are now, some of them are on display in Fairfield Elementary School, and for everybody to see, this is what was here, this is who was here, and this is the activity that was here before, many years before the school was built. So what happens? What happens in that case? I understand exception number nine perhaps covers that. Can you detail that a little bit for me?
With the anticipation of potential cultural resources, in the event that cultural deposits are encountered during project activities, the applicant owner must comply with ORS 97 and ORS 358. So those standards state that if cultural deposits are discovered, that they would stop work and contact an archaeologist. So similar to the thing, situation that happened at Fairfield School.
Okay. And with Fairfield School, it was, it was certainly not human remains that were discovered. It was artifacts, and so there was less, perhaps less sensitivity. Maybe not. Maybe there was no less sensitivity, I’m not sure, because I can’t, I’m not, certainly not an expert on that. But I do know the construction stopped, and that the kids going to Fairfield Elementary School have a wonderful lesson in who was there first, and the heritage that we live over, live around, and are immersed in, in Oregon, every place in Oregon, not just in any one spot in Oregon, every place, probably where we are right now, close to the Willamette River. You know, it’s, so I guess the, my question there is, you’ve answered my question, that according to two different Oregon revised statutes, there are very specific rules as to what happens in case any unanticipated cultural finds are encountered.
Correct.
Okay, I’m still concerned. Thank you. Any further discussion? Then we do have before us, Ordinance Number, Ordinance PA 1343. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Bozovic?
Mr. Chair, I’ll move approval of Ordinance Number 1343.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion to the motion? Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Probably in the 12 years that I’ve been on this Board, this has probably been one of the most difficult applications to, to work on. Regardless, folks here probably don’t know, I have a pretty rich history in the Oak Ridge area. My great-grandfather, Jasper Hills, was there, was, was a trade, a trapper, and a, a guide in the area, and in fact, friends with the Toughke family. And there’s books been wrote by my family, Lawrence Hills, capturing the history there. Unfortunately, none of that’s the, none of that’s criteria. Some of that was information that was used, whether to document significance, but that’s not the criteria that is used to approve an application. It’s pretty clear under state law what the application requires. Requires a significant resource, it requires a certain volume of resource, and then once you determine those two things, then you go through and review whether or not there’s things that need, that need to be mitigated, can’t be mitigated, and how they’re addressed. I believe the application and the findings that are being proposed to adopt, the 90-plus pages of them, very extensive, very detailed. It doesn’t make the decision any easier. Another piece that I put in my mind is, is that, you know, I question, why is the applicant even doing this? They have the right to do it, so that’s probably why they’re doing it. But as I think about, you know, the market and demand and, and what’s taking place up there, I wonder if there’s resources there that already meet the demand, so. But once again, that doesn’t get back to the criteria of the approval process here. Fortunately, I can’t, when I took this job, I committed to applying the law and applying it the, the way I believe, and our staff has recommended it be applied, and I can’t find a reason to say no. I wish I, in some ways, could, but unfortunately, I have. So, thank you.
Please, we have a, we have business to conduct here. Thank you. Clear the room.
I’m not bad enough. If you folks want people to participate in reading this most young-
You know, Mr. Mokr Hyskey, at this point, I’m going to, I’m going to cite a Eugene Ordinance, it’s Lane Manual 3.907, which states, “No ordinance demonstrations such as applause, cheering, display of signs, et cetera.” Now, it does leave a great deal of latitude to the Chair of the Board to, to ask, request, and demand. As the Chair of the Board, I’ve given a little bit of latitude at this point in time, but we’ve had, the record was open for a long time. We have gone through the deliberations, it’s a lengthy record, and at this point in time, the Board is conducting deliberations as to passage of an ordinance. If anyone does disagree with the, the findings, anyone does disagree should the ordinance pass, then it’s, it is appealable. That is how to make your voice known. This is not the time or place to do that. So I’d ask that you comply with the, with the protocol and with courtesy, and just allow us to conduct our deliberations here. And if our deliberations are not satisfactory, then please exercise your right to appeal, exercise your right to protest in places and demonstrate in places that are not in this, in this, this hall. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your courtesy. I appreciate your being here, but please, this is the latitude I’m using at this point in time as a Board Chair, and I did cite the regulation that I’m citing, that I’m, I’m naming that under. So we’ll continue. At this point, Commissioner Stewart, are you finished with your questions? Further questions from the Board?
Actually, not questions, but speak to the motion.
Commissioner Bozovic?
So first, I just want to make a little bit clear what we’re approving today as Board of Commissioners, which is an application to amend our Rural Comprehensive Plan, to add a, a significant resource, aggregate resource to our plan. It’s not a permit to operate, and it’s, and it’s not meaning that anything’s going to happen on the site that we identify. The rules for amending our Rural Comprehensive Plan, which anyone can apply to amend, are very specific and laid out in a quasi-judicial process. So, you know, like, you know, we’ve walked through in previous sessions and with, with the staff and all that, you know, the first question we have to answer is, is there a significant resource there? And I don’t think anyone disagrees that there’s not a significant resource there, because even some of the opposition’s numbers still were well above what qualifies under state law as a significant resource. So the next questions are about ability to mitigate impacts and several other items. And we have been very, had a very robust discussion over those, those impacts we can mitigate, and which cri-, you know, which things we have to mitigate under the law, and which things we’re allowed to look at for mitigation under the law. And there are some things we cannot just bring in from outside of the criteria and, and consider. We have done a lot. We’ve, you know, at the Board’s request, even gone beyond staff’s recommendation and asked for several improvements to these, these conditions, particularly around making sure that the noise monitoring had very clear criteria about when it was going to be done, how it was going to be reported, what was going to happen if they didn’t maintain that plan, particularly about any dealing with off-site tracking of, of the, of dust, you know, and dealing with some of the concerns around silica. We also changed the criteria around the diesel engines, so we could deal with diesel emissions. So there’s been multiple things we’ve done that the Board- So there's been multiple things we've done that the Board asked for, even going beyond. We are in a period where we've gone past our time period to make a local decision, which is, we're in a dangerous situation in some ways. I have personally done professional testimony in a mandamus case, which the person that filed the mandamus won against the city of Springfield. And when they won it, they won it with no conditions. It was, so I, rid of mandamus is, you know, flips the scales completely, and basically puts it on the government to prove why they can't approve an application versus the applicant to prove why they meet the criteria for approval. And really, and you're in front of a circuit court judge who may not understand all land use implications, and may fail to, you know, apply all of the criteria and conditions that were put into the original intended approval. So I believe, you know, that we are, if we approve this ordinance with the conditions contained, we are adhering to the criteria and the laws that are applicable, the record at the time, the record closed, and, you know, we will be putting forth a decision that is appealable, but I feel that the work we've done is going to be fairly strong upon appeal. I'm not really sure, you know, that's the whole point of us being careful about staying within the criteria, staying within the record. It makes our decisions stronger. And I think we've done so on this Board, and I think we've done everything we can to condition this approval to make it as least impactful as possible if the applicant or whoever owns this property in the future decides to move forward and try and pull an operating permit, which is a separate process, which includes a state agency, which could include consultation. So to be clear, what we're approving is an amendment to our Rural Comprehensive Plan, not an operating permit. The process is quasi-judicial, we have very clear criteria we're allowed to consider, and we have to make our decision based on the record, and I will be supporting the ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovich. Further discussion? Commissioner Sorenson.
Well, first of all, the lengthy time it took to get to this point isn't a reason to approve the application. It's a reason to be concerned it's taken this long, but it's not a reason to approve it. Secondly, the right that any county government has in making decisions to go beyond the rule that requires state agencies to consult with federally recognized tribes, and merely in this case would allow a county to consult when the county didn't do so, it seems to me that, given that that's been raised so many times by the public testimony, that's something that would be a good use of our discretion, to use that discretion to do that. And the Board has chosen not to do that. It seems to me that the danger that was raised by the public testimony regarding the conditions for the access to Highway 58, a very dangerous road, in my mind, that was never answered, to my satisfaction, that we had met the criteria involving the safety and compliance with all applicable laws and rules, and that we'd be putting an additional burden on Highway 58, and with no real modification or mediation of that impact. So I see lots of reasons and lots of rationale and lots of opportunity for the Board to take just the opposite approach that's being taken today.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorenson. Further discussion? Very well, then, Mr. Mokr Hyskey, I'll call for the roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bozovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Lykan?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Farr?
Aye.
Passes four to one. Commissioner Sorenson, nay. Thank you very much for your, Deanna, thank you very much for your work toward this, and our work begins. Thank you.
Thank you.
While we're clearing the room, Mr. Mokr Hyskey mentioned, I'm looking at the pictures right now of the artifacts from Fairfield Elementary School. And if you wanted to see them, Fairfield Elementary School is on Royal Avenue, near Okay, then, item 14, Health and Human Services. Today we have a first reading and a setting of a second reading and public hearing on ordinance 1702 in the matter of amending Chapter 18 of Lane Code to revise the ambulance service area plan. This is a second, excuse me, this is a first reading. Today we have Ms. Alicia Hayes and a panel. I started using the term "panel" today.
Panel, that's true. Thank you, Chair Farr and Commissioners. Today we are going to do a presentation, which is not typical for a first reading, but we wanted to do that for background. I want to introduce who's on the panel with me today. We have Jim Lake Homer, who is the Chair of our Public Health Advisory Committee, Diana Avery, and Debbie Heasel, who worked and staffed the committee and did the work on presenting this, preparing this, as well as the people on the committee. Also in the audience, I've never done this before, it's kind of fun, in the audience we have Patricia Allee, who is on our commission, and also Jim Robertson, right there, who have been active participants in the work here to revise Lane Code, Chapter 18. I think we are ready to go. We are going to today give you an overview of the process that was, that included community and the committee. They did to develop the proposed changes, so we'll give you the overview, and then we'll walk through the general areas of proposed change. And I believe I'm turning it over now.
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I just wanted to give you a, oh gosh, I'm going to do the computer and talk at the same time, so we'll see how this works. Just a-
Can you talk on the mic maybe just a little bit?
Better?
Yeah.
Just a quick history of the ordinances. The ambulance service area plan was approved in 1987. We have been before you seven times since then to make some changes to the ASA plan. We have updated ASA providers, we have changed boundaries, we have addressed non-emergency and interfacility transfers, and on our most recent time before you, we added an ASA 9 and updated boundaries to align with the GIS mapping being done by ElCog.
So, thank you, Commissioners. In 2015, under the prior Chair, the Public Health Advisory Committee established a subcommittee to, for the purpose of performing an audit as per Lane Code, Chapter 18. This led to a proposal for revisions to Lane Code 18 to assist in future audits, including updating definitions and revision of reporting requirements. Some of that feedback was from the providers themselves. The P-hac members who participated in this review were frustrated in terms of issues related to data and some of the definitions. The ASA providers had concerns that the time zones, response time zones, were not accurate to what was going on today. And a common goal among both providers and the committee was to develop a data-driven system that would be useful for both the providers and P-hac to review performance and identify areas for the overall system improvement. This led to the desire to provide professional quality review of the ASA plan as is required of the committee, have it be data-driven, and utilize modern technology in terms of mapping, and lead to overall system improvement. The review focused on, in March, we had a kickoff meeting where providers, the P-hac Committee, and other interested stakeholders came together and identified target areas that we were going to work on. And then subsequent to that, it came up that the PSAPs, the Public Service Access Points, or 911 Centers, were an integral part of the system, but they hadn't been included. And so they were invited into the process and became active participants in what was developed. And the target areas were response time zones, reporting requirements, the role of the ASA Advisory Committee, and the quality assurance.
The first area we looked at were response time zones. Historically, response time zones had been estimated by looking at a map and drawing circles. The boundaries and response time zones that are coming before you in the proposed code have been done either by drivers actually going out and driving their ASAs from their stations, or by using GIS mapping, so they're data-driven response zones. Not all of the changes were positive. In Southland County, a number of areas moved from Zone 1 to Zone 2. We don't believe that was any change, we believe that they were never really in Zone 1, but when we drew the circles on the map without data, that's where they ended up. In the proposed revisions, based on this data, over 80% of Lane County residents are still in Zone 1. So most of the county still resides in Zone 1, the 10 minutes or under. Public work staff worked with each of the ASA providers to map new zones. The providers have data that they can utilize for looking at where they want to place medic units, or where they wanted to put stations. There's a really great interactive map that I didn't realize that we don't have internet, so I can't show you today. We can probably show you when we come back for the second reading. But Public Works has developed an interactive map that ASA providers and PSAP providers, P-hac members, and the public can actually go on, you can get down to street level to see where those zones are, where the fire stations are, it's really a phenomenal thing for people to be able to use when they're looking at zones. The second area that we looked at was reporting, and we made some pretty significant changes to reporting. We increased the required compliance with response time zones from 85% to 90%. We were able to do so due to the data-determined response time zones and to some of the other changes made in reporting requirements. We added reporting requirements for the PSAPs, or the Public Safety Answering Points. This was required by OAR, we had not been requiring our PSAPs to report. It's been a pretty interesting process. We have learned a lot about PSAPs. We've learned about primary PSAPs, where the call comes in and the ambulance gets dispatched, versus a secondary PSAP, where the call comes in, gets transferred to another PSAP, then the ambulance gets dispatched. It'll be very interesting to start to have data around how all of those work and what those notification times are. We added language regarding first response vehicles. This allows response by an engine rather than an ambulance if the engine has the required EMT staff and medical equipment onboard. It extends the amount of time for the ambulance to arrive because a medic is already on scene. We added exclusion criteria. This allows ASAs and PSAP providers to exclude a particular response from the metrics that would be for factors such as incorrect address, weather, something like that, that impacted their ability to get to the address on time. The other thing we did is we removed reporting requirements for ASAs located in other counties. Three of our ASAs are staffed by out-of-county providers. If an ASA is a provider in their home county, and their ASA accounts for less than 2% of the population of Lane County, we allowed them to be exempt from the reporting requirements for their ASA in Lane County.
And the code, the recommended code changes include some clarifications around the definition of your ASA Advisory Committee. The P-hac will take on the functions of the ASA Advisory Committee, and if you approve these changes, will establish a subcommittee that will meet quarterly to review ASA and PSAPs' performance measures reports, meet annually to review adherence to state licensing requirements, and provide system improvement recommendations to the P-hac, acting as the ASA Advisory Committee. The makeup of the subcommittee will include representatives from the Public Health Advisory Committee, from ambulance service area providers, and from PSAP providers. We would be requesting to have two ASA representatives and two PSAP representatives in order to assure geographic diversity for those discussions. We really want to make sure that we build on the kickoff meeting and the work groups that manufactured the recommendations that are in front of you, so this ongoing collaboration and collaborative review can ensure systemic improvements in our ASA plan going forward. Any recommendations from the ASA Subcommittee would run up through the P-hac and then through the Director, as described in the recommended code updates.
And-
Not, not-
And Diana's going to continue.
Ms. Director?
This reminds me of Commission on Children and Families all of a sudden, I don't know-
Just feeling it, aren't you?
That's right. The code updates also address quality assurance of the ASA plan and calls out the difference between the P-hac as your advisory committee's role in ensuring the efficient and effective coverage of ASA providers throughout Lane County, and also clarifies the responsibilities of ambulance service providers, internal quality assurance and quality improvement plans, and reporting some of the outcomes of those to the committee. And P-hac, in support of the Director's role to administer the plan, will annually verify adherence to state licensing requirements. And now Ms. Hayes.
So, in conclusion, want to bring this forward to you and let you know that we worked for over a year on this plan to ensure that we had consensus from ASA providers, PSAP providers, and the members of the Public Health Advisory Committee. This, as it says on the slide, this will allow P-hac to receive data needed for reviewing the plan, and remember that your P-hac, as Diana said, does serve as your ambulance service area committee under Lane Code. And the plan is geared for collaborative approach to system review and improvement. So, this is the first reading, we will be back on the 11th for a second reading, and now we have time for questions from you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'll turn over the floor to the Board for questions, comments. Mr. Bozovich.
So why is my house in 45 minutes or less? I'm actually, I'm going to talk to Chief Nye, because I'm surprised that there's not any green in Bonita around the main station that actually has professional staff 24/7. So, a little curious there, plus territorial, they have an ambulance up at Franklin on territorial, so I'm a little surprised that some of that green doesn't wrap around Fernridge, but I'll talk to Chief Nye and maybe get a better understanding of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovich. Further questions? Commissioner Lykan?
So, not necessarily a question, but I did want to send out a hello to Dr. Allee, and whom I've known for many years, and she was a customer of my business, and I was a customer of her business for a Springfield family, so I want to welcome you. I haven't, I know you've been part of this, and even though I haven't had a chance to talk or see you, it's good to see you again. Yeah, you bet. Actually, the only thing I really have to offer is just really the importance of this. As a member who's been currently in my second year as Chair of the Lane Area Commission on Transportation, involved in transportation issues, the importance of this, considering the fact that Lane County, this will be your second year in a row, we will lead in transportation fatalities. And we were having this conversation yesterday, in fact, Lane and Clackamas are number one and number two for the second year in a row. And so that's just why I think, you know, anytime we have information to share and to dialogue as far as this service area, is going to be very key. Until we can figure out how to, again, bring in revenue to expand our traffic team, unfortunately, this may be something we'll be dealing with. So, keep up the good work. Unfortunately, this is something that, because the vast majority of these accidents are happening in rural Lane County, I believe that, number 70%. So of the 57 fatalities, 70% happen in rural Lane County compared to the urban areas. And so, that's why I think when we see these service districts and how the importance of them, I just want to say thank you very much, and it's always good to get to, actually to hear from members that are absolutely involved in this, so we can just, and I mean, I'm listening, because Commissioner Bozovich and Commissioner Stewart, they understand rural Lane County much better than the rest of us, and how this affects their, you know, our constituents, indirectly. So I just want to make note of that and say thank you very much for the good work, and looking forward to continuing to hear where we are in this ongoing ASA, so thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Then we have before us the first reading, and this is the first reading, so we're requesting Commissioner Stewart.
Commissioner Chair, now that I'm looking at the map a little bit, it's my understanding that Southland Rural Fire has an ambulance stationed in Cresswell, so I'm a little surprised that the dark green is a little bit bigger. Also, kind of like Commissioner Bozovic, that response time might be a little better on I-5 maybe than it shows.
We can certainly check in with the Chiefs from those, and this is what we had and what was mapped, but we can certainly ask a question.
Okay, thanks.
And if I may, in the interactive map that we will be showing you on the 11th, because we will make sure that we can connect to the wireless, you will be able to see some different green areas. And you'll notice that in Southland, that includes a slight green around the city of Cresswell. Farther out of Cresswell, on Ham Road, there is a substation, but there's no ambulance placed there, no emergency medical.
And it might be, I'm not 100% sure if that ambulance is stationed 24/7 in Cresswell. That might be another issue, that it's just a certain period of day.
But we will double-check, and we will get that interactive map, so that you can, it's, you know, shades of gray is difficult to determine where lines are and what's really happening. I apologize.
Well, thank you. Then we have, we've concluded the first reading of Ordinance 1702, and we're looking for a motion surrounding a second reading and a public hearing on perhaps April 11th. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Bozovic?
So I'll move the first reading and setting the second reading in public hearing for Ordinance Number 1702 in the matter of amending Chapter 18 of Lane Code to revise the ambulance service area plan, and setting that second reading in public hearing for April-
For 11th.
April 11th, sorry.
We don't have a time certain.
Do you need a time certain for that?
We don't need a time certain, please, no.
Okay, so setting the second reading in public hearing for April 11th, 2017.
Second. Moved in second, a discussion to the motion. Seeing and hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much for the presentation, and we'll see you in April.
See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow. Well, did you get my message?
I'll listen to your message.
Say one thing, it's hard to argue with the areas that are in pink.
What happened? Wasn't it just Christmas?
Four and a half hour response time. If we're up in the Three Sisters Wilderness, see, it just might take that long.
All right, moving along, Mr. Mokrheyski, let's have a review of assignments.
I have three items, Mr. Chair. The first was, as a result of public comment this morning, there was a request to have the county look at an county ordinance to allow car camping and other temporary shelter opportunities in the UGB, and a couple of Commissioners offered that, requested actually that we analyze that issue and look at the existing IGR with the city of Eugene to see if that, or if our existing laws allow for that to happen. So we'll review that and bring it back to the Board for an update. The second item was a request and approval from the Board to allocate $5,000 for the Western Regional Conference in Deschutes County, and so we'll move forward with that item. And then the third, I don't think that needs to come back, because you took action to direct us on that one. The third was Commissioner Bozovic's request on the stepping up initiative, and I just wanted to pull up real quick. We connected with Health and Human Services and with Ms. Gaffney, and requested that they take the lead on this issue, and so they are going to reach out to AOC about the availability of a discussion with the Board, and so that one is assigned and in progress, and we'll come back to the Board, I think, for a discussion update in the future. Those are the three items I had.
Any additions, corrections? I don't see any. Thank you, Ms. Mokrheyski. We have no call for executive session today. Other business from the Board. Seeing and hearing none, we are adjourned.